Are we fighting these?
Oh, you should leave.
Are we fighting these? I guess we'll go ahead and start, see if you want to.
I guess we don't have anything that we need to do. So I think we'll start the study session and let Mr. Davis and crew kind of take it from here. They approached me after our last meeting, just kind of as a follow-up, just to kind of, you know, get some feedback on what you guys were thinking and how we can kind of line things up and reiterate it to them, you know, your thoughts and everything that you convey about, you know, buffer number of units.
Is there any, I mean, I'm just asking, not just, not because of y'all, but is there anything in our ordinance or anything, see how many times we can bring something back?
Uh.
I'm just asking, because this is the first time it's come back in a time, so.
Well, the typical step would be to go to the Boardman and Alderman from here, but I think they had some changes or something else they wanted to propose, so.
Pretty much we've got a study session and we've had a planning commission which was denied, like, all right.
Yeah.
Yeah, thank you for your time tonight. This is really just revisiting our last meeting with you all as it was just sort of summarized. We have, we had an initial work session. We've had three meetings so far before the planning commission. We've had our first work session, our first voting meeting that got deferred, and then we had our second voting meeting where we were denied. And so it's our goal tonight to just kind of recap some of that. We'd like to just get a little more input and dialogue with the planning commission because we still feel like this project has merit and we want to partner with the city on a successful project. And so, you know, just as a, as a quick recap, because we've all been in holiday mode and I know you guys have a lot on your plate as well. In that first work session, I just want to kind of go over the comments that we heard and responded to at that time. The two big items at the work session were, you know, back off of Raymond Hirsch, we'd like to see that edge maintained, and we'd like to see the architecture because with our first submittal, we didn't have architecture provided. And we talked about architecture and the level of, you know, masonry and architectural, you know, delineation on the elevations. And so we came back with our first planning commission meeting, having addressed those. We did, I believe, almost a thirty-foot minimum buffer along Raymond Hirsch to really maintain a existing tree edge along there and screen the development. And we provided four-sided architecture. I think actually at our first meeting, we had front elevations that showed some masonry and color palettes. The two main comments that we took away from that first voting meeting that we received our deferral at was when we met with the neighbors who I see are, or were here, are here tonight. You said, hey, you need to go and speak with those neighbors and get on the same page and make sure that you can provide the proper buffer. There was also a question about public versus private roads and rental versus for sale. And so when we came back at the second voting planning commission meeting, we hit, we went away, we met in person with the neighbors, we talked about the logistics of that buffer and species of trees and plant types and how we would accommodate that. We, at that time, felt like, you know, we were on the same page with the neighbor and had met the expectations for that buffer. And then we stipulated on our plan that we were doing the private roads versus public because, again, we want to partner with the city on this, we want to do what's right by the city, and so we changed the roads to private. And then at the second PC voting meeting where you all did choose to deny the project, we learned that the neighbors may actually not support the project just because of development in general. They'd like to, I think as we understood it, really not see development at all. It wasn't so much about the buffer. And it was at that meeting where really the first time we heard that the city was not interested in residential. And so that's really why we're here because, you know, we made a lot of effort and we feel like the project fits well for a couple of reasons. You know, we have been in conversations with the Publix folks just to know what's going on. We know it's not a done deal for them, but they are looking seriously at that project. You know, they, they like our project, they think it's compatible, they like the rooftops nearby, you know, they, in general, support the project. So I think that's good. And, you know, as we look at compatibility around this area of the community, you know, we have the Highway seventy-six and the Highway thirty-one commercial corridors. And I think realistically, that's where the commercial development is going to gravitate towards, and that will be, you know, where those frontages and the trips traffic-wise are and where it's going to warrant more commercial development. You know, this site has some physical constraints for commercial. You know, it slopes from the back at the high down to the low at the front. We have a stream cutting right through the middle. So all the ponds and the stormwater infrastructure want to be at the front of the site, that's not conducive for commercial development as much either. The topography itself is fairly sloping, not as conducive as the site above where the Publix is going. We just, you know, we wanted to point some of those things out, come back to you, just sort of rehash and say, hey, we're, we're still here with our ears open. We think this is a high-quality residential development. And just ask that you provide any additional commentary that you feel is appropriate. We, Peter would like to say a few words as well. So thank you for your attention tonight, and we appreciate any input that you might have.
Yeah, thank you very much.
Can I stop you in just a minute and just introduce you because I didn't hear the names at the beginning, Josh Reynolds and Peter Davis?
Yes, Josh is at Kimblehorn.
Thank you.
Peter Davis here from Elmington.
Thank you.
Thanks. We also have Michael from Elmington as well, Michael Lamping here, and then Patricia and Austin, the.
As you come up, say your name so we know we can attribute the comments to the right person.
Gotcha, okay, yeah, that's, that works. Yeah, so we, we just wanted to make sure we revisited this site again to, like Josh said, get all your feedback, make sure we're incorporating everything into the plan. We have a lot of conviction in this site and White House. Again, like Josh mentioned, we want to partner with the city to provide a really nice residential development that provides that connectivity to commercial usages, especially if Publix goes in there. I think it'd be a nice way to connect multifamily and commercial and really get that mixed-use development that is outlined in the comprehensive plans. Also, I wanted to give Patricia and Austin here a chance to speak. I know they had some comments on the project. We've been working closely with their broker, Catherine Andrews, throughout the process, and she's in turn kept them updated. I know they wanted to say a few words, so I want to give them an opportunity to speak here in front of you all.
Thank you for giving me the opportunity to address you. I would just like to speak in the name of progress, progress, progress. Everywhere you look around Nashville, White House, and anywhere you go, they'll build them. Nobody's sitting still. Nobody's got these great big lots, you know, that take you a day and a half to cut. Nowadays, the way the generations are growing up now, they wants to live somewhere where it's comfortable. They go out and do whatever they want during the evenings, they come back home, take the shower, and get ready for work. I think about no, uh, grass cutting. But what I'd just like to say is that I can recall when Miss Limousine come down to the house in Christmas of, I guess, about ninety-eight, ninety-nine, she was extremely tore up. She was tore up simply because they wanted to cut that Richmond Parkway through her land. Well, long about that time, I had no idea that anybody was opposing it but her. But after I finally got through her head what it took, or what the law could do when they get ready to run a highway through your land, she finally understood. And I'm pretty sure anybody that's been here in the last twenty years, you can understand how much of a benefit this Parkway has been to the community. It has eased the traffic and it has served this community very well. But now, this property that I have now, me and my wife, we're getting to the age that we need to get rid of it. And if somebody else is opposing, would like to purchase it, I, I will sell it to them. And they can build whatever they want, or they can keep whatever they want, you know, just treat it however they want. But basically, what we're saying, we don't think we should be denying the privilege of selling our property at a fair price. And that's why we're here tonight, you know, is to let you know, you know, we'd like to get rid of it. And y'all excuse me for my short breath, I've had a surgery and I can't catch my breath as much as a woman. But anyway, I'd like to tell you about one other thing. Had a forty-by-eighty trailer on that lot. I come up here with a contractor to get ready to upgrade that trailer. Somebody had taken the air conditioner out, somebody had cut all the pipe men out. Well, I called in and I had the police and I wrote a report on it. Well, came back, I guess, within another six months with same contractor, got ready to upgrade it. I said, a big trailer like that, three bedrooms, a dining room, bathroom and a hall, it don't make sense for it to sit out. But anyway, uh, when we got up here, they had broken up the dining room furniture, smashed all my windows out, broke up stuff and threw it in the commode, had a singer sewing machine, antique, that you operate, foot-operated, real fine piece of furniture. They had taken it and threw it outside. So that kind of put a bitter taste in my mouth. So I said, I can't get ahead for always coming up here falling behind and wondering why. So whoever's concerned, you know, I didn't hear nobody voicing no opinion. So I'm going to shut my mouth up and let my wife talk a little bit because I, I might say a little too much.
What did this spell out? Because we always had the one kept, up-kept, the upkeep to it, Mr. Vaughn always did that for me and watched that for the property because when my husband got sick, it was hard for me to come back and forth up here to keep a watch on the place. And that's the reason why we know that we got to the place where we were getting too old and my kids had passed on, so that's the reason why we were wanting to sell. And when we went into the process, this is where we are now, we just found out today that, you know, that it's some controversy about what they want to put on it. So that's the reason why we're here, just to find out what is it that we could do, you know, to not just deprive us from what we want to do as well without them.
So I, the developers and engineers, they came in and met with us. So one of the words I used was timing. We have a total of nine hundred multifamily developments right now, so that was the way of thinking when they made the decision at the time, was the fact that we hadn't seen anything being built. So it wasn't necessarily a, you know, personal thing, it's just timing. And we got, you know, groups in opposition, not against the types of development, but just, you know, the wording was we want to see things being built. So that was really the reasoning at the time. And then one of the things the commissioners asked for was possibly some commercial to be associated with the development, not just the multifamily townhome. So that was really it in a nutshell as to why, and I guess I'm kind of speaking for the commissioners, but that's kind of what I, you know, conversated with the developers about is the reasoning why. So I don't know if that kind of, not suited your mind or gives you more understanding of what the thought process was, but it wasn't like, you know, we weren't, you know, we're not opposed to the density because this is actually the corridor for the area where we want to see the density. But again, it's just we got nine hundred multifamily units approved and we don't have anything coming down to ground yet, so it gives us time.
Is there, is there plans to sell the parcel on the south side of Raymond Hirsch Parkway? Is that part of this package or is that held off separate?
No, it's separate.
Separate, so that is not sold yet?
That's not sold yet.
And is that commercial, I think that's still in commercial too, I believe.
That, that across the street's not very big a lot anyway.
No, it's not.
I used to have to drive through there to get to the Hirsch house near the bank.
Right.
You have to drive, and then you go across Miss Limousine's property to get back there.
Exactly.
There's a couple acres.
It was two, I think it's two acres. I think it's two acres.
Yep.
Oh, and that's, when they cut through the lot, that's what that was, it's two. But it's not part of what we're doing tonight.
Thank you very much.
All right, so this is just a study session.
Appreciate it.
Still, they have the ability to go before the Boardman and Alderman. I think we gave a recommendation, but I guess they wanted us to look at it again, talk about it. Like C just said, densies, I'm not really, because I don't know about the density in this location, it's well over seven, under eight units an acre. At the last meeting, we talked about not having any commercial and then basically townhouses backing up for the bypass, concerned with that. Then there was a question about the buffer on, I guess that'd be the east side?
Yeah, we increased the buffer on the recent middle plan.
Oh, that's my question, what's different?
Uh, we increased the buffer adjacent to the neighbors to give them even more privacy.
How much, how much did you increase it?
We increased it, we added the fence line.
I believe we have around thirty. Now, the plans you're seeing today aren't different from the ones you denied, with the exception of the architectural elevations.
Right, but I think Kelly also added the increased buffer between all the way across, between our property and neighbors.
I apologize, it did go, we added a portion of it and extended the full length of the property lineup.
There was some concern about, at one point, we had tried to conserve as many existing trees as possible, but there was concern that since we hadn't done a tree study yet, we weren't sure which were going to stay and which were going to go, so that could provide gaps in our buffer. So to get ahead of that, we decided to show an increased buffer with the fence all the way along the backside. So even in the event that some trees given, and once we provided a survey, if some trees were removed or weren't fit to serve as an adequate buffer, there would also be a fence line buffer there as well. So it was, it was a way of trying to appease the neighbors without having a tree survey done, because there wasn't enough time to do that. And then the architectural renderings, we added the privacy screens that we've been talking about a little bit to show more accurately what the rear of the, of the, of the units would look like. The privacy fence? Uh, those would be wood privacy fences. Yeah, and as far as the commercial goes, in addition to the topography being challenging for a commercial use, if you were to build commercial along the frontage, you would lose the Parkway feel. And I know that in the past, we've talked a lot about preserving Raymond Hirsch Parkway as a Parkway with tree lines on both sides, and commercial would materially get into that tree conservation.
We originally talked, the reason the townhouse originally talked about being for sale, since it's become rental, is there a reason the townhouse design, because the parking is limiting a lot of what can be done? You know, you've got a thirty-five-foot parking space between the, it just really limits what you do. If you had that, you had more of a central parking area, you could probably pull it off the property line, increase the buffers. I mean, is there a reason, I know now since it's more, it kind of went away from for sale, rental was still the townhouse type.
Right, and we haven't decided a hundred percent if we want it to be rental or for sale. Our products are flexible and that they can be both. There's not a material difference between a rental property that we develop and a for-sale property. So at this point, we haven't made that determination yet, but we would do that at a later date.
But the townhouse design, the stack design is something, you're pretty, that's pretty much what the product would be.
It's that nice in-between of apartment living versus single-family. I mean, if you give somebody a parking space in their own private driveway, it gives them a garage space, it gives them neighbors on two sides instead of, you know, four, it gives them their own private backyard patio space. So I mean, there's, there's a lot of attributes that is like single-family living but doesn't require the single-family maintenance.
Right, and every one of our communities has an HOA, which we're, we run and we're on the board of each individual HOA, so we maintain it and we self-manage all our communities. This also has amenities, I mean, there'll be dog parks, pocket parks, great for children, there'll be connectivity to the greenway, which I know the city's invested a lot building out. And if the goal for this piece is mixed-use, net increased pedestrian flow and walkability that comes with that, I mean, this will be, this will be perfect for that.
Can you describe to me what you mean by pocket park?
Yeah, I mean, it's essentially, we take our site plan and we work in, you know, parks in strategic places so that they're walkable.
Small node areas.
I mean, they're, they're parks, they'll have jungle gyms and play areas and benches.
Are they playgrounds or?
Some, some will be, some won't be.
And the ones that aren't playgrounds, what do they have?
Benches, play areas, things that, that parks have.
What kind of play areas? What, I'm just trying to get a better idea.
Grass to, you know, all around.
Mean by a pocket park.
I mean, level graded irrigated turf so you could, you know, run the dog, throw the frisbee. You know, we, we've done pocket parks with small top lots or playground equipment, you know, slides and swings. We've done others that have fitness, you know, outdoor fitness little stations, if it's, you know, if it's balance beams or pull-up bars or even some of these hydraulic-type fitness equipment, you know, just having, you know, a small shade structure with a picnic table and a grill so that folks can get out of the house and have a place to have a birthday party. It's just, we haven't.
Their place is our bit, yeah.
We haven't programmed specifically those spaces yet, that's the, that's the.
As I saw them on the drawing though, I just saw it's small areas, it looked like grassy areas, and I didn't know what your plans were for those. It would be helpful to know how many are going to have equipment and how many are going to have fences and benches and barbecues.
Sure. Yeah, we can do that.
I think, as Peter alluded to, having that walkability to a future grocery store and all the shopping even within the confines of the three major roadways is great. I mean, you know, a couple hundred, hundred-plus units of people being able to, you know, push a stroller, get on a bike, or walk to the grocery store. I mean, that takes the pressure off of the streets, you know, a lot of the trips where people would have to get in their car to go to dinner, go to the grocery store, go to the dry cleaners. So I mean, there's, that's that mixed-use compatibility that we think really makes this a compatible project.
So, am I wrong, commissioners, when this first came to us, I, I made note that it, that they would be owned, that they were condominiums when we first discussed it, right? But it changed, yes?
No, we've been clear since the beginning with CGS that the, that there's possibilities to be rental.
More than a hundred percent.
But most of your are rentals? Well, I'd lead up to believe that these will be rentals.
Well, they're not really, they're not really saying when they're.
Mike, speak to that.
Yeah, I mean, for, for our developments, and my name's Michael, we're, we're somewhere between sixty to sixty-five percent rentals and somewhere between thirty to thirty-five percent for sale. Now, that's across all of Elmington and across our history as being a residential company. I would say the last three projects that we've developed have been a hundred percent rental. We've got one site specifically that we're breaking ground on here in the next thirty days that's going to be a hundred percent for sale. When we look at these projects initially, you know, we're developers and we're also a contractor, we're not the investor in the project. We go through, get the land entitled, we're obviously going to use ourselves as the contractor, use ourselves as the architect, but we're going to go out and find investors for the project. So we don't know if we're going to find an investor that wants to hold these for a long period of time as a rental, or an investor that's going to want to find these and have them as for sale. So we, we don't want to typecast ourselves into that this early in the project. And that's where in talking to CGS, we wanted to make sure that, hey, if there's a chance these could become rental, we want to make sure that we're doing the right thing by the city of White House and making the roads private. Whereas if they do become for sale, it's still a benefit for the city that this is a private development and maintained by the HOA. But we didn't want to get into a situation where we're down the road and we have public streets, but then we flip to rental and you guys feel like that we misled you in some, in some form or fashion.
If you couldn't have that bigger percentage as rental, would you have somebody in-house on-site?
We would, so.
To manage rentals?
We do, so we've got a property management company, Elmington Property Management, so we manage thirty-five thousand units across eleven states, primarily focused here in Nashville. But if we have a community as a rental, we have a full-time leasing and community director on-site, and then we have full-time maintenance on-site. So if residents do have a maintenance request, it's literally just walking down to the clubhouse, it's not calling and waiting twenty-four to forty-eight hours like some of these larger national rental companies.
We did talk about commercial last time, we've talked about it all of the times we brought this up, it wasn't just the last one. And what your all's feelings, I know there was some talk about the whole thing being left for commercial.
Yeah, there was, we talked about the whole thing being commercial, and we also talked about mixed-use where it's residential and commercial, but, you know, now it's just.
My thinking is if you're going to get a public in there, something better might come along that would tie into public that is commercial. I think it's the ideal commercial, because we're running out of commercial. I mean, seventy-six is full, you don't have that much commercial towards Summer County side, you know, most of our commercial is down seventy-six. And me personally, right now, I cannot in good conscience vote for another multifamily unit, and we've got nine hundred haven't even been started.
Another example?
Yeah.
I have a hypothetical question, if Publix wasn't, and I don't know this, I'm just asking off the top of my head, if Publix was in support of that?
Wouldn't change my mind. I think we have nine hundred that haven't been started. And is there any more land that's already zoned for apartment that hasn't? And is there any more land that's already zoned for apartment that hasn't been taken up yet? I don't know.
Yeah, everything would have to be requested. We don't have, we don't have many R T Ms. Many flood would have to be requested by someone, so there's nothing that's just sitting there idle to be a quarter. We don't have to answer your questions from the board? Would you open to it? Stay seated.
Did you spell the last name?
Thank you for the opportunity to get to come back. One of the things that I, I want to clarify is we personally do not have any problem. The developer called me the following day and asked me and, and has worked, has worked with us and, you know, mentioning and... But I told him, I said, you know, when we got to the first meeting, the study session had already taken place. Our ultimate goal, of course, we can't stop progress. It's going to happen. It already has all the way around. But we still feel that, as, as Mr. Doris said, you know, we are just doing too much of the same thing. I would like to say that, again, I have no complaints to the developer, but we never shook hands. We never said, this is exactly what we want. We felt at that time, we had no reason but to try and get as best as we could what would be good for our family, our mom's property. And the, you know, one of the things, the buffer changed and, you know, it went to even a better buffer. But that was requested by the planning commission. I mean, that was not, you know, we never had any kind of agreement. But they were very willing to want to do something in a way to, to make us be pleased. I do wanna say, in all respect to, and if I may call her Limo, because we grew up on that property and, and her and her family are quite special. And there's nothing that would ever want me to do anything, to mess up anything for any member of her family. We are just, again, protecting and wanting and feel like, we don't know what tomorrow's gonna be. So what is wrong with, and I understand they need to sell it, but I think, I can't speak for Limo, but I do know that, you know, she was a, a person that was very fair. And, and I can see her being upset when the Greenway, because we were right there, we were too, but we got that all worked out. So, again, I don't want it to look like, I don't wanna misrepresent. But no decisions between the developer nor I, nor me and my husband. We just, we listened. I agreed. It seemed pretty reasonable, but ultimately, my goal was to, let's just not do this with that property. Let's, let's do something a little bit different. I don't know, I don't do real estate, but I still feel that in honesty, that the city, yes, you have a, you're taxed with a, a broad job to do. But at the same time, the people in White House, we are very concerned and want it to be and feel like you're in a position to represent and you do represent all of its citizens. And I just, with bulldozers, it almost seems like when you go down every road, you're saying, oh, man, what's this gonna be? You know, and I just feel that if you were to petition the people, I think you would find they would like to see some controlled growth with it and not just put the same thing up that we've already got nine hundred and, and nobody knows, you know, what's going on. But I'm gonna be quiet so my sister can talk, but thank you for, for your time.
Well, let me just repeat that. We do appreciate this opportunity to be able to speak. We appreciate and understand you have a very large responsibility. We appreciate you stepping up to the plate to be willing to do this for the city. A lot of people would run from the responsibility, so thank you. As Debbie said, our family has been on this property for a long time. And out of respect, we grew up not knowing her as limousine. We grew up knowing her as Limo because she was always friends, her mother, before she passed. Friends with my grandparents, my parents, my uncle, us, until she passed. Fine woman. And I, I know it upset her because it upset everyone. And although I hate that Limo is no longer with us, at least not in physical, you know, there is a person still on that property in that area, and that's our mother. We are here to protect our mother. We all have mothers. They're all just equally important. But we have to be a voice. Our father passed, or he'd be right up here. Our mother's not feeling well tonight, or she'd be right up here. And mothers already, mother and daddy already did some compromising when they sold that small strip of land for the Greenway. The Greenway's been great, we've all used it. This city has not had a lack of progress. There's been a lot of progress and we understand they want to sell this land and they're at a point in their lives where they want to sell. We totally understand that. But there's always two sides to the coin. We're looking at our mother sitting there, that right now, we don't even know if these are going to be rental properties or if these are gonna be for sale and what the percentage, or later on down the line, that could change. Whatever is put in there, I don't care if it's the Taj Mahal. And I say that not being smart in my response, but my mother's gonna have to endure everything associated with that. If you have your small little parks that they spoke about, these pocket parks, there's a noise level. We always, already have a noise level from the kids playing at the elementary school. That's fine, we're used to it. Do we want it in our back door? That's gonna be in our back door. People rent, I've been a renter, but the problem is sometimes, we all know, and this is no disrespect to renters, but sometimes renters do not take pride. Renters do not have the same concerns for neighbors because they're only temporary neighbors. They don't necessarily have the level of respect that homeowners do. That's a concern. I could go on all day about the things that could happen that we don't know right now. And again, this is our point of view, but we are longtime citizens and we know we're just as important, or we should be, as the progress in the city. And we, we're happy with the progress. I remember when we had one stoplight, one hamburger joint. We're happy that White House is what it is. But again, when we walked away from the last meeting, we were under the impression that we're also concerned that we've got to even up our ratios a bit more. We've got so much going on in apartments, being constructed. We don't have much commercial space anymore. We know that it's going to turn into something. We don't think that land's gonna stand, sit there, you know, idle forever. But we've got to look at what would be in our best interest because we're still there. And if it were to go to anything, we'd rather it be commercial. That would be the best thing for us and we think it'd be better for the city as well. Putting a road in and apartments to me are two different things. We needed that infrastructure for the road. But apartments, we've got apartments. It's not a must-need thing and y'all not even had the time to figure out. I know Miss Keller said, what's the magic number? What's enough? Not being, you know, facetious, but just trying to say, we need to look at what we've got, make sure we're in control of it before we move on more leaps and bounds. And I know you guys haven't had time to do that yet, so we just wanted to make sure we walked away with the right understanding from that meeting to know that when we left, your thoughts were, you were not ready to make it go into a residential with more apartments. Again, it could be the Taj Mahal, but that's not gonna change anything. We respect everyone involved. Everyone has a job to do, we understand that. But our job is being the daughters to our family who's been on that property for years. And we want the best for everyone. We don't wanna just think of ourselves. We've got a whole city of friends and neighbors and family, not just the Meadows. But we do appreciate you hearing us. We can go home and tell our mom, at least our voices have been heard. And we appreciate that. We want the best for everyone. Thank you.
So your next step for them, I guess, I don't know if they're planning to take it on to the board by all year or not. I guess that'd either be that case as it's shown, or do you think the intention is to come back here with something different or?
I, I'm not sure. I'd have to, I would think that, you know.
You know, it's not our intent to go to the board without your approval. And so our goal tonight was to come and listen again and get input from everybody and let you hear from some folks that wanted to speak tonight that hadn't had that opportunity. And if there were additional comments that could help us get to the goal that we ultimately wanna reach, we're here with open ears. So with that, I'm, you know, we're here to answer any additional questions or take additional comments or suggestions.
We've got a few, I mean, I feel like there's three big issues. One's the amount of commercial, if commercial, how much? The buffer, you're talking on that northeast property line, is really the question. That's why I was measuring roughly like five hundred feet is the question on the buffer. And could they redesign anything? I said, I, I mean, if you're, I say, until it's all commercial, then there's pretty nothing they can do with their design. But if there is a design that we think would be more appropriate.
I would have felt different if the buffers had been substantial, but they're not.
What is substantial? I mean, if you could, if you could have, if you could put a number on a buffer, what would that be?
Your minimum buffer right now is about twenty-five feet, right? That's the canopy of one tree.
But we put like five trees and thirty shrubs in that, in that, in that buffer every hundred feet. So I mean, there's, your buffer requirements are, are pretty robust.
I, I get that, you're gonna plant some things, but that's not the same as existing mature trees.
And, and it's our intent, once we do the tree study, to save as many trees. So if, you know, if you think that a thirty or a thirty-five foot buffer is, gives us more room to preserve existing trees, I mean, we can.
It just didn't sound like we were meeting the intent of our request, which was to block the development so that it's behind the tree line and so when you go down Raymond Hirsch Parkway, it still looks similar to the way it does today. And so that neighborhood through the tree line would be its own little neighborhood. And they would also be isolated from the traffic and noise and the cars along the Parkway. It seemed like a win-win, but at twenty-five feet, it's really small.
Were you talking about our buffer with our neighbors or on Raymond Hirsch?
I was talking about Raymond Hirsch first and then also with your neighbors.
I, I think on Raymond Hirsch, we're closer to fifty feet. We have a pretty, and we only have a few, we only have one building that even fronts Raymond Hirsch.
I do have one concern that I've raised a few times, whether it's gonna be commercial or residential, we definitely need a sidewalk along, along Raymond Hirsch Parkway. But you know that.
It's thirty feet.
Okay. But, and again, we, we have the, the one building. If, you know, if it's a matter of taking, you know, trying to find another place for that building or moving it an additional, you know, ten or twenty feet away, I mean, that's what we're here to listen to tonight.
One of the reasons I ask you, if you're, it's a townhouse design, because with the way the parking is, it is right limited. You got a lot of green space in the middle where you could probably move some more units, but when you're putting these big parking areas between the, you know, the sidewalk and it, it limits what can be done. Yeah, they could probably put all of them in the center, the little roadway, if it wouldn't for that. But it sounds like the townhouse design.
I mean, I think it's, tell me, of those nine hundred multifamily units that you've approved this year in the last, you know, two years, are the majority of those apartments?
We have three apartment complexes that are coming on under construction, we have two hundred units each. I don't know if that's all parking lots or parking for, 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 I guess.
How many townhouses?
We've got a hundred and twenty, I don't know if it's about thirty-one that's moving.
And honestly, you know, the, the rents and the, you know, the, the demographic of folks that would, that would rent or buy here, they're, you know, just a different demographic than an apartment renter. And that's, that's Elmington Residential, they're different than Elmington, a different group in Elmington that does the apartments. They're focused on single-family and townhomes. And it's that, I mean, these are nice finishes and these, this is quartz countertops and, you know, nice flooring and, and nice finishes. I mean, this is, you know, a, you know, median household income of seventy-five to a hundred, you know, in order to rent or buy a townhome like this. So I mean, this is a, this is a, a high-end community. This is gonna, it's gonna be maintained to that level. It's gonna have the amenities reflective of that, that level because those types of buyers or renters demand that.
We're going back, we have six hundred apartments. We have some complexes and then we have about three hundred townhouses and, that's got, we have Crowers and we have thirty-one W. Those are the two large ones.
Crowes over here.
And then about thirty-one is over here.
Henson.
Henson F P.
And, on, uh, Woodson, those thirty-five.
So about three hundred. So we're, we're looking at close to nine, nine hundred, a thousand. That haven't been built yet.
Commissioner Corbin, you mentioned the density.
They're gonna have a tax, they're gonna be another part of it. Those are some dollars or two, yeah. Yeah, no question about it.
I got a question back here.
I don't have a question, I've got one comment, it's fair at all. One thing we're failing to mention here is the fact that we've got four, over four thousand single-family dwellings that have been approved also. So we, we're starting to get into a situation where we're gonna have other issues, you know. So, you know, you're, you're over five thousand, you know, between the apartments, townhouses and single-family dwellings. And most of those have not even been, a lot of them have not been started. A lot, most of them have not been finished. So we're gonna start having issues in other areas. So just kinda keep that in mind too, of what that's gonna be.
I think that's the debate on how much commercial. Yeah, I mean, we all get right now, is there a lot of commercial potential for it, especially next door? But long-term, you know, we're only gonna have this one bypass and we're, that's what we're really, just seeing how much, we think it's all commercial, a portion of it commercial. Yeah, I agree with him. I think it'd be hard to be all commercial, this way it was at, but I hate not to see this all given up, especially units backing up to the bypass in that area. That's why I was asking, I think there's some things with the design. If we feel like it's more of a design issue, or we got majority of the land commissions like, I just don't want it to be anything but commercial, then, you know, there's pretty not much. But if it's a design issue where they can look at ways to increase the buffers along that, where the existing single-family is, because you have on this project, say it is a big commercial development, but the buffer's not as crucial there. It's more on that property where you got residents, because on the other end, you got backs up to commercial lots on Highway thirty-one W. So it's real, like I said, it's a five, six hundred foot section that's really the question on the buffer. I guess the commercial, how we feel about the commercial, we think it's all or could some commercial be left aside? I think that's the key. I don't have a problem with residential density. I know, you know, the city has itself, I mean, this location, like CEGUS said, timing, you know, would we love to have ten more years of development for some more coming in? But I mean, it's what people wanna, you know, they wanna come in with his own gut and plagues. But I guess that's the question. We feel it's the right time for more density, for more residential density in the design of this or just all commercial?
Yeah, what if we had a mixed-use plan where we came back with kind of the townhomes focused in the center and in the back and then along Raymond Hirsch did out parcels for commercial, kind of running Raymond Hirsch and then a single entrance that went back to a townhome community? I mean, is that something that, I mean, I'm just throwing out ideas.
That's why I was asking about the residential type, if it could be more different types, you know, where you're not losing all that space.
Well, that's, if we make it a little denser and kind, I mean, unfortunately, we would lose like some of the green spaces, but we could put along Raymond Hirsch, you know, some of those commercial out parcels that we could use as well.
Were you thinking right near the entrance, just on both sides of the entrance?
Exactly, yeah. I mean, do that kind of more of a mixed-use community? I mean, I know we think about publics as mixed-use within this community, but really having this be a mixed-use community as well.
And CEGUS is honest, though, you can even do, so that's why it really depends on the design you're going for. You could do where you got commercial, ground four, residential above. But it sounds like you're wanting to do more, your demographic, you're looking.
Yeah, we just don't specific, yeah, I mean, we typically don't, I mean, we're a residential contractor, so we just, we don't have the expertise to build up in that sense.
And bear in mind that commercial needs visibility and frontage, so, you know... So, you know, while we could give more buffer along, you know, Raymond Hirsch, if we're all residential, if we're gonna go commercial, we have to, you know, take advantage of that frontage and that visibility on, on the parkway for, in, in order to make the commercial viable.
Ever been to Hilton yet? I have.
Yeah.
They seem doing very well, and they don't have any disability coming around. If you've ever been there, I mean, you have to hunt for things, but there's a lot of buffer between them and the developments. But I think that's kind of, we need to be going for more here.
I guess through their question, is the commercial, all hundred percent commercial or possibly some fringe commercial option? I think that's kind of what they're asking.
Right, I mean, if we came back with a different plan that had commercial all along Raymond Hirsch and put our townhome development in the back, is that more viable than you all's opinion?
We're about to fix this all for sale, not rentals. And we did, we then, you talked about the exterior stuff still, it's not like we talked about being fifty percent brick or stone, and that's all the way around, I'm just looking for.
I think for their standpoint, they don't want to keep spending five thousand dollars on the plans, come back, do a little, we ask them to do, then come back, not regret anywhere. I think they're just wanting to know if there's any chance for it to be, if we're open to design issues.
All right, we got about ten minutes here.
I'm throwing a sidewalk to get at you, because, you know, I spend a lot, a lot of time with grants, you know, trying to get sidewalks up in this area. We're trying to sidewalk Raymond Hirsch all the way up to seventy-six, seventy-six thousand thirty-one, all the way through a full raft. And, you know, if, if we don't require them to put a sidewalk along there, strip of land, then we're gonna be stuck trying to write another grant, costing the city money. Of course, we draw federal money in with it, but still, we have to put out, on the consent of these grants. I've just got to look at the group for that intersection. We're gonna completely improve walkability at that intersection with a sidewalk extension down to Greenway, all the way down past Garden Hill and over to Dollar General. So, you know, that's gonna cost the city, you know, over two hundred thousand dollars in addition to money out of the federal government. So, I, if they're gonna present another plan, you please put a sidewalk on there.
Definitely.
Yeah, gotta have it. You know, we're trying to get a grant.
Well, let me ask you on this, what would they do to sign, because you got some pretty substantial, just make it more like a town. And I almost have to revise this, because you got a shoulder there now to do a sidewalk. I don't know if a sidewalk could work on the other side.
I'm just on, on their side.
Yeah.
Sidewalk is on their side, and we're talking about bringing all the right eight, or, number eight, more, tell her a tree, tell her a tree there. We started it a little bit, maybe speedway a little bit on both sides. Be nice to eventually have it on both sides, but I'm just concerned about walkability all the way around that big block. Because, you know, we have a lot of activities in that area. Pray, events, the city park, it has to keep a walk, any sidewalks, and getting more regulars. So that's all I'm trying to, just let, let you know, if, if we don't do it now, it's gonna be a expensive city down the road, trying to do that.
And I understand that visibility, you're talking about commercial, you know, on Papa John's stuff, it's not there, it's not in the woods. I mean, and it's been successful for not just that business, but that building. Yeah, so a couple items we talked about, and we're, I think we have one question here.
I just, about a month ago, I asked CJ just how many separate residences were already approved? The number was five thousand, I think twenty-seven.
That's total in pipeline, it means five thousand, it was five thousand three hundred and sixty-four, that's total, including single-family.
So, right, the whole mix. But if, if you multiply that times three, we're gonna more, we have the potential to more than double, and that's what's already been approved. We don't have the streets, we don't have the schools, we don't have anything to support that right now. That's what concerns me.
All right, so we'll regrip a little bit, because we've got about five minutes. One, this was planning commission recommendation to deny, haven't been taken to the Boardman Alderman. So they still have that option to go forward. I think as our discussion tonight, there's still some questions about the design, how much commercial could it support? The sidewalk design, the unit designs. So I think there's still some question, I think that's what they were looking for tonight, not just for us sitting here and talking for an hour.
That, yeah, I think we're.
To actually give us some.
I mean, again, you know, the, the owners were kind enough to come and join us, and they've been really willing to work with us through this process. But I think we're trying to figure out if we took the Raymond Hirsch, put commercial parcels or pads there, moved our development to the back, fifty percent brick on the townhomes, is this a deal that planning commission will support?
I could live with the design that you have with the townhomes, if you had a buffer that's substantial and that blocks it from you, that you also have sidewalks and that you address the building materials front and back. I could live with it that way, but I mean, you've got to make changes.
Okay. So no, but from your perspective, you'd rather have the buffer on Raymond Hirsch than commercial parcels on Raymond Hirsch? And us put a sidewalk in on Raymond Hirsch?
I agree.
Okay.
I think you're gonna have to pick your poison either for sale or rental.
Okay.
Not, not, not right at the fence saying, well, maybe this, maybe that, but.
Commit to it, it's something we know.
I mean, it's like a fifty-five plus, I'm gonna build a fifty-five plus, uh, units, but.
I mean, if I had to commit to something now, I'd commit to rental.
We're, we're gonna build a fifty-five plus, we're gonna, anybody can live in there. But if you're gonna be older than fifty-five, you can live there. So it's kind of, kind of that way, you're kind of on the fence about.
Yeah, I mean, if we had to commit right now, I'd commit to rental, because I know, that's, that's more what we do. I know that, you know, the rents would be in the two thousand dollar range. I know that we would have a property manager on site, a community director on site, we're gonna maintain. And that's gonna kind of take, you know, I know one of the concerns was renters typically don't keep up with their property. Well, we, that's why, that's one of the ways we address that, is we have people on site, so we handle the maintenance, we handle the lawn upkeep, we handle the exterior upkeep. So there's never really that concern. Our concern, like, when we build a community, if you go to any of our rental communities, you have no idea it's rental from the exterior, except that every home is kept up, every yard is cut, and all the, all the, all the mulch and everything is always taken care of.
On the, on the, on the other side, if, if it's, if it's all sale properties, when people move out, they move out after a few years, there's a good chance they may rent that property out. And then you don't have the management on site, you don't have, you, you, you can go, you can go home, but it could be negative. So, it's not all perfect, rental is not all perfect.
It can end up being a rental that wasn't planned.
And that's what we try to avoid, because you know, when somebody owns a, I mean, and a ton of people do this, but if you own a unit and you're out of the neighborhood and it's just one renter, that person can really do whatever they want. And then the homeowner on either side has to live with that regardless.
You know, the, the, the other option we hadn't discussed, and it's probably not feasible to you, but it's already zoned our twenty, so if you wanted to build seventeen point eight acres, you could do twenty thousand square foot and not have to, you know, other than submit, you know, to us, you wouldn't have to get a rezoning for that. I know we just, we hadn't talked about that, but that's an option, uh, to get twenty thousand square foot houses and flats.
Well, and, yeah, your point being the city doesn't want to see that, right? I mean, that's.
Well, we wouldn't, we wouldn't.
And we're not.
It's already zoned our. It's already zoned our.
But, and we're not commit, I mean, you know, and one of the things in talking about the road impacts and the school impacts, with this size of development, right? We're gonna have a lot of development fees that we're gonna be paying to the city that hopefully, you know, go to help solve those issues, not only for our residents, but for the residents that are currently living here.
What is res, Robert, the two dollars a square foot residential?
Commissioner Eller, thank you for your candidness. Are there any, any other candid comments or, I mean, Commissioner Doris, we understand where you stand, I think.
I think we're overloaded right now. I think it's bad timing. I think it's a decent idea. I'm not gonna vote for it. We've got fifty-three hundred homes, apartments, whatever. We gotta stop sometime and sit back and say, yeah, we gotta, we gotta get control of this thing. This horse has run wild. I think now's the time.
Would the other commissioners mind telling us where they stand, so if we, if we were to expend the time and effort to, to, to make some of the concessions and, and add some additional features, where, where we might end it?
Mr. Berry shares, Mr. Doris has, uh, come, he called today.
I was talking to someone, he called me.
It was me.
And I said, it's timing, really, it's timing, it's just, um, if you'd probably been here eight months ago, you could hear me, you'd already have on the books. Just to have another, another development, just to have a development. I think the other commissioner said earlier, you know, we could probably fill up as many as we can build. And there's no, and a few of them have been, uh, if you're gonna, you're gonna have, I think, if you take anything right now, it's gonna have to be something really special. And, uh, this is just more of the same what we already have. Just, just the way we look at it, I think. I just don't, uh.
I'm paying you more. And I, and I feel for the property owners, because I, I think everybody has a right to do what they want to do with their property.
Sure.
Because, you know, being a property owner, I don't, I don't, anybody tell me what to do with my property. But we've got so much of this already. But, uh, even if we hide you and all the buffers that we can get, we still got, does that mean more units to get?
Yeah, and I think that's, I mean, of the fifty-three hundred, I don't, I don't know where all of those stand, if they're all under construction today or in the end development or, you know, that's, that's one thing about us. I mean, we're not gonna rezone it and just sit for years, right? We're gonna start construction that next day. Not that that helps the question, but I think we would come before a lot of those folks. Again, I, it doesn't address the concern. We got another meeting starting in seven, so I hope that was beneficial for you guys. Yeah, we appreciate everybody's time.
Yeah, James.
Does anybody, anybody else?
Ms. Moore, huh? What's that?
It's just that, I'm not a champion, it's, they should, they should, they should only allow.
I'm not an SEC holder, I'm, I'm from Michigan, and that's not real, I just like to upset, I like to, I'm a part of. How about you, SEC guy? I wouldn't conference you.
Should be, the, the conference would do the change.
So more people than I expected to play, what's going on? Oh, that, I missed it. What'd they talk about?
Uh.
We're gonna start our meeting at seven here. All right. So roll call show, all members of Mr. Berry here tonight, uh, so we'll start with the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
CJ, is there any changes, additions to the agenda?
Yes, I took off, uh, you guys may be showing the, uh, oregano tree, I took that off the, uh, engineer's site plan, I wasn't ready to do that, you guys.
Number five of item five, is that the only change?
Yes, and.
So I guess we'll go next to a meet, approval of the meeting agenda?
Make a motion we approve the minutes from the, the primary agenda.
Do a motion, have a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Agenda approved, approval of the prior minutes from the December thirteen, twenty-two thousand twenty-one meeting?
Make a motion we approve the prior minutes.
Do a motion, have a second? We'll do that to Mr. Doris, a motion second, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
So the minutes will be approved. Individual review of the agenda items, item one said something, I guess we'll just handle that, CJ just wants to point that for us.
Uh, this is, um, Stones Crossing, uh, there, uh, fifty thousand, forty-nine thousand dollar bond. Uh, it hadn't done any work, uh, we're in the process now, actually Andy's been very aggressive over the last couple of weeks, everything out to these bonds that we have had hanging around. There's two, only two of them that have just kind of been out there, uh, so I recommend the six percent approval, uh, increase on this one.
I mean, because that one's been going on, and I know y'all said the binder was still in good shape. Let me ask you a question, when they filed the roads, which that was awesome, I saw them out, filing the roads, did they come down this road also? Because there's been people living back there. Okay, that was a big question, as long as it's true, you know, the city hasn't taken it over. So, okay. All right, so we do have a request, a recommendation to do a six, uh, six percent extension on the bond? Motion, have a second? Second, motion second, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Right, any opposed? All right, item one approved. Item number two, Jackson Farms new engineering requests final master plan development approval for four hundred twenty-eight single-family lots, open space. This project is on Bill Moss Road and Kalista Road. All right.
Uh, yeah, this is the, the PDM, PDMP was approved back in May, uh, approved by the planning, planning commission, Boardman Alderman. The developers have addressed, and I put in, put in the staff notes, I put in PDMP, uh, developer staff comments that we initially made to them, as well as some that we made to them when it came to, uh, for the final. Everything has been addressed, uh, based on staff comments and, and department recommendations.
CJ, so we, I think we all received the email, uh, with a list of items, like, I sent some residents out there. Can you explain that? I think there was a question that, or the motion was made by the Boardman Alderman.
Yeah, um, I think Mr. Matthews sent us an email, very well, well-written email, uh, with, uh, issues or grievances that the community or surrounding neighbors had had in there. And, uh, one of the Alderman made, uh, a comment about the grievances and, uh, you know, uh, that we would address and look at some of them. There was no motion or stipulations made at the end of that meeting. Therefore, this, um, you know, once it's rezoned, the developer then has what's known as by right or, or right to, uh, move forward with that rezoning. I think that maybe sums it up in a nutshell.
Yeah, there were fourteen items, I went through them, uh, some of them are, you know, once the preliminary master plan, you know, the owner does have vested rights, and there was requests to reduce the density. I really don't, I mean, just my opinion, I don't think that we can, the Boardman Alderman approved the preliminary master plan. But there were some things, one of the big things, connection, roadway connections, volunteer, uh, some of the buffering along the houses, if there's any way the design could be shifted around, um, gone, or what, you know, the approval of the development. But, um, I actually still try to look at those items. There were some questions about Kalista Road, I think at the last meeting, the previous planning services were, the developers giving the city money.
Yes.
It will be improved, that section of Kalista Road, I think, in a three-year timeframe. I think that, I may have just read through the, the things they talked about, some of them were about the noise and dust from the project, things like that, um, which I know we, we already have things to address that. But really, the things I've kind of looked at, I feel like would be worth discussion if we're trying to, you know, review those, would be the volunteer roadway connection.
Yeah, and, uh, buffer out is, is, like, still from the Jackson Farms?
So a question about the buffer, if that could be altered, uh, in volunteer, I know, you know, look, I'm kind of sitting there for a little. So a question about the buffer, if that could be altered, uh, in volunteer, I know, you know, look, I'm considered one of them, but they're a little worried about people coming in on volunteer, which has been for, what, since the early eighties, I did, and I don't know if it was intended to be connected through, but I don't know, is there any discussion if that become like a limited connection or?
I don't think there's been much discussion on, on that at the time, as soon as it...
I don't think it's a limited, um, we get down to the, we've had the thing before, uh, you either close it or you don't, you know, see, or, you know, even like it is, if you close it, you have no connectivity, you have some division, or you, as you said, it was intended to eventually go through, so I think the planning commission would make that decision, you can put it on record, they want, which way to go, I'd give it, okay with that. We get, we get lucky, my staff is comfortable with these things, so, you know, make sure you get it right.
Did y'all have a chance to read the other, the items and the email, went through it, I mean, y'all, was there anything you think add to other items, the bigger view?
The other thing I would, I would add to that item is, if we were looking at modifying what they're doing there, that, that analysis was done back in the preliminary too, with, with the, the traffic study that they did there, and that would be a very significant change to the study. And, uh, and, and my personal opinion is, um, it's only gonna benefit the, the... I know it impacts them more significantly, but in, we think of volume of people, the only benefit from limiting or changing that connection to, other than a fully functioning way that it's done now, is only gonna be to, you know, the twenty or so lots that are there. And, and you essentially would go up here and contribute all that traffic back around the same, but if you're assuming they're wanting to go home Wilkinson in the west direction. So they would come up to Calista, you know, in a, in a scenario that already has issues and add more traffic there, so it, it, it would definitely be worthy of backing up and reanalyzing the study if we went that route, instead of just making a decision to change that connection. We may not like the picture that's painted when we look that route.
And that would just only leave one exit, I just, right, my business.
Well, you could move, you can move east and west on Bill Moss, but, but if, if someone's going out and, and, you know, planning to go the short route to Walmart, then now they're just gonna go to Calista and up around you, you're adding a longer travel time to what's essentially the same route. Only for those twenty lots, you don't have to see those cars, but we're going to increase the problem on Calista, the intersection of volunteer and Calista.
Seajust, any thought on the buffering, changing?
Yeah, I, I, I reached out to the developer to change that, either buffer along sixty-five, it makes more sense to buffer more, and Alderman Hudson, uh, reached out to me, we discussed that, it makes more sense to buffer along volunteer than to, uh, buffer the interstate, uh, to protect those existing residents. But I did reach out to, uh, the developers.
There is a twenty-five foot buffer there now, correct?
Yeah.
So what do you, want to do, increase that?
Yeah, Alderman Hudson was asking them, uh, to increase.
Is he looking to increase in space B on C, C one zero? All the, all the, uh, the open space to the interstate, just a little rotation of, uh, the lot, something to get some buffer in there behind, uh, Stowe and the volunteer and...
So we're gonna change, we need to go back to the Board Mayor Alderman?
Go back.
You should think you shift that without?
We already got the rezoning from the Board of Mayor and Alderman, so this body would be the one to make that.
I think that's the confusion, because I think the comment by the, the resident sent us the email, but I have, I feel like they felt like they were asked to look at things that could be... I've never really seen that before, where Alderman approves something, the possibility, and just kind of leave it wide open like that, and I don't know if that was Mr. Decker, I tried to listen to it, it's real hard to hear, uh, to see what, if there's any more guidance on that.
You talking about, um, recommendations of listed grievances? Yeah, I listened to that today too, and it was, I mean, he talked a lot about comprehensive plan and other things that he did, did say that was because of, that if you had the grievances still there, that would be recommendations, and, again, as he already pointed out, there was no, uh, there was no motion to change the ordinance as written, or amendment or any stipulations. And, um, the ordinance was approved four to one, as written, so, uh, but, but that doesn't, then the fact that we should take a look at grievances and try to see if it's a better result, as many of them kind of...
Seajust, is, is, looks like the open space, is that, that's the only I can prove, open space in it?
Yeah, and supposedly, um...
Not a lot for, for, you know, playground.
They were gonna have a community center that I asked to also be, be listed on here as well, um, and I thought they would be here to speak to it.
Do you think, I mean, was the, it sounded like we have a couple of questions, uh, Seajust asked, we wanted to defer this until next month, but...
And also, here, uh, sorry.
I'm just surprised they're not here, if we're to consider this, why aren't they here?
All right, so we have a motion to defer, uh, second, we got, uh, Cliff and, uh, Bob, so all in favor of the motion to defer, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, so motion passed to defer. All right, next item, Sage Road subdivision, uh, clover engineering, request final master development plan for proposed assisted living facility on Sage Road, my understanding this provision is just include the, uh...
Well, this is the final, so the preliminary last month when it came, if you had the assisted living, and, uh, we had a couple of staff recommendations where we had looked at, uh, uh, adding a connection off of, uh, Sage into the development, it's not shown on where the engineer was gonna bring it, but, uh, she, she, she seeks one, you know, she didn't just skip out, and I told her I could possibly, probably address, uh, any questions she had and Sam as well. But, uh, again, that will be a full access off of Sage, which we had initially discussed it, uh, in, in preliminary talks, and for some reason it's something that we didn't ask them to do at the time, but they are coming back to do that. Uh, you also asked about the fire, uh...
Oh, yeah.
You asked about the connection, uh, down where the apartments were, and fire department felt that that was sufficient, the way it is now, uh, other than that, nothing changed, uh, those are the biggest that I walked away with.
The stuff on the elevation pit?
Uh... Yeah, they asked.
Oh, they did, yes, I'm sorry, they did change the elevations to, uh, be stone brick or hardy, uh, on the, on the elevations near the mountain, so, uh, if you look at the back, uh, on the top page of the preliminary, uh, elevations, it shows that they had a rectance going up, or stone looks like, one of the old base, the building on the backside, so they didn't have a lot of time.
It's gonna be nice, like somebody you see in Hendersonville, some of the ones they recently built, it's gonna be a nice project.
No, it won't.
All right, so they have made changes per request that, um, discussed, and this is the final master plan version, does it affect there's any changes other than the four and ten minute file?
I would, uh, ask that, I mean, you look at the recommendations, make, I mean, you know, make sure your motion would be to make this, the elevation, part of the elevation, the, the brickstone, the part of the preferred material that the city, uh, asked for, just, just for, you know, clarity.
So it'd be to basically confirm the design that's submitted, and that the city's preferred materials will be brickstone, uh, at the base and the, the entry areas and hardy on the rest, something like that?
Okay. And the buffer on the road, uh, is that kind of Sage? Yeah, the connection on Sage, the backside, here, it's at the backside, and they also, uh, the landscaping over, the, the landscaping over the sewer, I mean, that was another thing that they addressed, uh, and the buffer on the backside of Sage with, uh, with the homes with AC units there, showing buffer along those also.
So we would just, someone make a motion, if, if it is to approve with those stipulations Seajust made?
I would like a motion to approve with those stipulations for Sage.
We got a motion, second?
What type of buffer do we have around this? Is it a D or a, I'm looking at it as...
Twenty-five feet.
Two feet with density?
We're not removing anything.
Removing anything, you're adding to it, so the measures in the porch apart don't have to...
We added more to it, there as you're saying.
I was just thinking, our, our regulations, the D, which is our, our thickest, sometimes it's written on the front, but I'll say it. What do you think, Seajust?
I think, uh, when we walked away, the first time, uh, you know, we walked away, we came back with what we asked them to, uh, with the fact that he wasn't taking anything along the tree line, and that he was adding to it, I think that was the bigger thing. Also on the traffic home, and I failed to mention, uh, they're gonna, there's a speed bump, uh, that he created at the traffic home.
That's about six or eight feet wide, something like that.
Yeah, so we covered the base of the fire, the fire trucks, or emergency vehicles going up there.
It's going to happen to buildings.
But it won't be cated.
Yeah, just, you know, just something to slow you down.
To make sure.
Well, is there anything else you want to make any kind of motion with, uh, I mean, we do have motion, second approval, any kind of additional stipulations to add on that buffer?
We have adequate sidewalk.
Yeah, because, because, you know, I'm a sidewalk buff, and it's one of my things I'm always looking for. We're, we're putting a sidewalk on Sage Road on the opposite side of the road, it's gonna come all the way up, that will connect down at Madlin where we have the sidewalk that goes all the way to seventy-six. So we've all, we'll have a sidewalk all the way up there, and our plan is to, as you, you get up to Sage Cardin, when you cross the road, and now you'd be on the north side of Sage Road, and along their properties, they're gonna put a sidewalk on, on the south side of the... So if we can continue that, Jason's been calling up, they're working on plans to, to look at what we can do to extend it all the way down to possible thirty-seven.
Motion is second, we'll cover the items, are there any...
Anything you wanna do, and just to comment on buffering? I think, I think you design, uh, designate what level of buffering, buffering it has to be.
Okay.
So we're saying, we just can, leave all the existing trees, and then we're gonna do a D underneath where it's, uh, as thick as possible.
Is that something?
Is that, is that something that, I mean, that's the most...
We made the motion, Martha and Bobby will come up with that too.
It's like our thickest buffer we have.
Yeah, we just added a lot last time when you asked us to, so, I mean, if we're...
But what, which I'm saying is...
Yeah.
A lot is not a thing, we got anything to back it up.
Oh, yeah, 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 no, you're just asking for clarification.
It's gonna be our, our thickest, our thickest density of...
Thirty-five.
Of, of bumper.
Twenty-five, thirty-five.
It's twenty-five feet, but the density would be D. Okay? D, D is, I'm correct, right?
So they use the twenty-five for bumper, and the material in there.
Yeah, and I'm correct on D as being our thickest.
Yes.
All right, so we do have a motion and a second, approve the stipulations and we expanded our stipulation. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Approved. And there, we would note on that, we didn't see any building elevation on the houses, but that was brought up at the preliminary.
They were in the preliminary plan, so that's why I didn't include them in the commission, because I think we just looked at them as...
Item number four, Honey Run Springs, Brad Edwards, request minor, uh, plan amendment to the approved final master development plan regarding square footage and exterior building designs on some of the additional units proposed.
Yeah, uh, they're, uh, looking at, uh, changing buildings, but they're gonna keep the, keep everything imperative of the plan, the same, uh, materials and the same quality, uh, they're increasing the size of, of, of driveways and adding a couple of reinforcements.
How many lots are left back there, are units?
Twenty.
Okay. All right, y'all, we're saving the packet, actually, we're in one of these units that are, that are extremely nice, and these cottages, that, stop design, uh, you know, they were talking earlier about the townhouses, something like this, you know, it's a, I think it's a different kind of product, we don't really see in my house, and they're, they're really nice, so it's a good way to put in density. All right, so we do have a mo, um, are any motions for this?
Motion is approved.
Motion?
I want to, I want to comment that this is really nice, and it's complete, and it's detailed, and very attractive, so, yeah, thank you for adding more of the light to an already popular building.
So we have a motion to approve, second?
Second.
Motion is second to approve, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Standing.
Motion passed. Uh, we don't have item five, so we do have item six, which will be a discussion item regarding thirty-two hundred square foot campsite, I'll send this is about the project on new road.
This is where I draw the meeting out for another forty-five minutes. So we put the, thank, thank you, we put in the, uh, measures for, uh, the, uh, the sand for campground, uh, I did get a call from the guy who did purchase the, the twelve acres, and he had concerns about the fact that, you know, our standards are, uh, requiring a campsite to be thirty-two hundred square feet. He didn't think, he thought sixteen hundred would be sufficient, uh, he told me to, I, I, I told him I would ask a question, he also, uh, we noted that we don't, no camps, no campfires when there's no manager on duty, he asked me to consider taking that away. And then, uh, the number of bathrooms that are in our, our ordinance, uh, he asked to consider because the campers have showers, another thing was long-term camping, the fact that, uh, his words were that they're gonna be workers on sixty-five, driving three hundred thousand dollar campers, so he thought we should limit the number of, uh, we're not limit the number of days that a camper could stay in there. Uh, I'm not an expert in this, uh, I know, uh, my goal was to protect the city and put in the strictest, uh, that, that would give us something nice, uh, so I, I did tell him I would come back before you, uh, to get some feedback, if I could proceed to change that.
Seajust, how would, how do our regulations compare to other people's town, similar to the...
They're very similar.
They're extremely similar.
Is the thirty-two hundred, does that include, is that overall, they have to have thirty-two hundred per, or is it dedicated for the individual sites?
It's individual site, is the way I interpreted, um...
But this affects something you could do, basically.
Yeah, that does, it affects the number of sites you could do, so...
So what was he saying about thirty days, what did you think was fair?
He, he didn't have a number, uh, but I did tell him I didn't want a, uh, trailer park, uh, nothing against...
Kind of, kind of a land inside?
Yeah, nothing against trailer park, but that's not the desire, uh, of, of you saying...
And that's not the right place.
Right. But he did think that thirty day, longer than thirty days was, or thirty days was, was, was very strict, uh, again, with the bathrooms, uh, he thought, I think we required it, uh, I think it's so many per, in the density, he thought it was too many because of the fact that they have their own restrooms.
I mean, how deep is that property, if you put it central, the bathhouse central, would that be more than, I mean, that's six hundred feet, both direct, I mean...
I think at least two, I think you'd need at least two on that property, thinking about, just visualizing, I think, at least two, so, we're... Just thinking about.
I mean, is there different areas in these things for, part of it is only for camp, well, some of these things are extravagant, gosh, they're amazing, some of, is there, only this thing where the bigger ones would be where you would have your bathroom, I, I said what they're saying, if, if everybody's got their own bathroom, nobody's really gonna use it, but if they got different areas, so they rent, like, for the pool behinds that don't?
Yeah, I guess that's true with the pool behind, I hadn't really, you know, dove into it, uh, to see how it made it out, to answer your question, Ms. Martha, uh, a lot of the surrounding city ordinances were, were written in recent times, uh, and that was one of the questions he asked, you know, he was comparing, uh, other ordinances, and so, well, this, this particular place, they got this ordinance, but they got, this campground doesn't, you know, adhere to what the ordinance is, and I, you know, I had to tell him that these are newer ordinances, and cities are trying to be more protective of, uh, different things, so...
I have a friend that lives full-time in RV in Oregon, and every thirty days, the entire development moves down one spot.
So what do they do when they're ready to move out, it's hard every year?
The last day of the month, they have a, you know, community campfire, covered dish dinner, and everybody who's old will...
Wait, the city, the city would get involved and unfortunate that if there's a problem, if they're in three hundred thousand dollar, and they're gonna work in, I don't think those are problem issues, but, um, there could be issues where people...
You limit the, I mean, you limit the number of bathrooms, right? You limit the, I mean, you limit the number of bathrooms, right? You're probably gonna get less of the whole, yeah, holding it, but you can't limit, hard, have a minimum size of vehicle.
I hate, I hate, I just wanted to...
Is that, we wouldn't allow it, I mean, of course, that could be a lot of candy.
I don't know, I guess I was just, just, just...
You can only handle three hundred thousand dollars for campers or a bus. I don't think you can do that.
Are you gonna, are you gonna judge me, what's an RV and what's a tiny house? Because, seriously...
Yeah, somebody got a whole big, high, ninety dollars, right?
Not that I would get tiny houses, I mean, some of them are really thoughtfully designed, and some of them are thrown on the back of a wagon.
Site regulations, the same, so...
Yeah, yeah, well, uh, this gives me some, 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 uh, food to go back and...
We need to make sure...
Come on, you gotta, you gotta go, you gotta...
It's an older one, I mean, they, they extended it recently, but, I mean, they're not thirty-two hundred square feet.
No, I see.
I, I wanna comment one more thing before I lose the thought, and that is, uh, campers, RV trailers go up fast when they catch on fire. So let's make sure that we have the water pressure and the water lines and the hydrants on site to handle that, because people die in camper fires.
With, 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 uh, thirty-two hundred square feet, you got enough distance between them, and I would just, before you, before you put camper in, but, with, uh, with, uh, pull-out air thing, and bake twenty feet around it, kind of went up to thirty-two hundred square feet, what you have, so you bring us smaller than that, so, uh, thirty-two might be a little large, but it's not too much too large.
I mean, you could help with the density, you could say thirty-two hundred is how you figure, how many you could have, then you could balance out some that are gonna be bigger and some that are smaller. I guess if that does, yeah, thirty-two.
Nobody wants to camp on, off of sixty-five, right?
There's stake marks for that.
But, like we said, you know, this is basically like a hotel, it'd be good, if it's done high-end and well, I think, definitely be welcome.
Some people would get one spot for their, you know, and then they take their kids and their kids and their...
I may ask him to do a study session, uh, if he, because he's, he bought the land, so he's serious about it, uh, I don't think...
Does he have a, a camp branch?
He has, a couple. He has, study session would be good.
I think he has.
Now we're gonna have to have some sort of music festival.
Let's stick, let's stick to a good...
Right, I think you have an interstate festival.
You can always back up, you can't, you can't have...
And a buffer.
Like, well, anything else, Seagull?
No, I think they have to give reinformation, you know, everybody.
Anybody else have any comments for your journey? Alright, we set the journey at seven thirty. Thank you.